There's not gonna be a real good way to get to it.
Yeah. That's, I didn't even know they were moving it.
Yeah, I haven't seen if they're gonna keep the old building and do something with it. I mean, they've just stuck a bunch of money into it. I think they are.
Are you bored?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's gonna be a big whatever.
Do you know, are they keep it doing something with the old courthouse in Canton?
Or. Uh, it's gonna stay where it's at. The Justice Center.
Just the Justice Center. So.
Court.
Court. Okay.
For court cases.
So like the treasurer and all that states there is just a court house part.
But the courts are going to be at the Justice.
So what will they call the courthouse? What will they call courthouse then?
The house.
The house.
Just the house?
Let's see if I can, see if I have any influence over the uh, interior decor.
Oh, let's get this rolling. Are there any additions to the agenda? Then I would go looking for a motion to approve.
Subute.
Motion in the second, all in favor? On to open up the public hearing for conditional use permit at two twenty-eight North Main Avenue.
Hey Ruth. Questions you have in front of you a.
I don't know what you're asking.
You have in front of you an application for um, really is a a change in the existing conditional use permit, but I wanna bring this in front of the planning commission because the uh, previous permit um specifically prohibited using the eastern portion of this building for the conditional use permit. Uh, so the, the application is complete, uh, gives a little bit of information, uh, the change wouldn't change, would not um, the use would not change under this application, uh, they would uh, use that gravel parking area behind the buildings at the east uh, for storage of vehicles. The property information, so on and so forth, all of it, all available. Uh, the reason for the change is that a uh, art studio uh, has been proposed for the western portion of that building, which is a, a a use that's consistent with zoning, uh, and is permitted, you know, just under our general zoning ordinance is uh, the uh, does not need a conditional use permit top right there. Uh, the challenge here is that um, you know, we do have um, some history on this property, of course. Uh, and it's, it's taken some time to get it into um, at least close to compliance with uh, where it's been in the past, so. Um, just for some background, I did include the memo from the previous time this was up back in July of twenty twenty-three. Uh, so that memo is in your packet, as well as a new memo. Uh, and the new memo um, talks a little bit more about what um, complicating factors are at this point in time. Um, now again, the, the western portion was only to be used, but my understanding is that the eastern portion has been used uh, at this point, um, certain improvements have been made, but it does continue to have multiple vehicles and trailers. Um, some of those are not parked on the art service that we requested. Uh, and then there are, I did get a text this week about whether there are still racing fuel being sold at the address, and I don't know if that's the case or not, but um, I have previously advised that that wouldn't be an approved use for the location, so. Um, don't really have a recommendation on this, uh, because we, we certainly don't want to um, stop something from happening with the western portion of that building, but we do have a, a challenge here, so. Uh, advocate is here tonight to uh, speak on behalf of their application, uh, and uh, recommend giving that time, and if you have questions, to, to ask them.
I've got a few questions, I guess. How long have you been using the part of the building that wasn't approved in the original application?
Well, we're not really using it per se, we're just kinda parking stuff in there for the other shop. I mean, I, I know, I, we haven't been using it, you know, but the main stuff is done in the other building, you know, the western part of it. So. But there is a waste over there, we moved it from one building to the other, so.
And I guess I never drove around the backside of it, I haven't paid much attention, but it's just gravel back there.
It's a gravel lot.
Yeah, um, there's gravel back there, I think there's, there might be a lean-to shed back there if I remember right. Not, not in the best condition, but.
They had wood in there for their wood heater for us, we got rid of all that stuff, the wood's gone, everything, the, the little sheds still there, so. The wood heater is discontinued.
Yeah, and so, you know, in terms of gravel parking area, we will allow, I mean, it's not permitted in terms of new at this point in time, hasn't been for probably close to a decade. Uh, but if somebody does have a gravel parking area, we'll permit them to continue to maintain it so long as it's maintained, actually maintained and not improved.
Is it, oh, like I said, I didn't drive, I haven't been back there much. Is it weedy and, or up kept pretty good?
It's, it's kept up pretty good, I mean. You definitely see where the gravel's at, the lines, you know, so.
Where's the definitive line between like the east side and west side for like what the conditional use permit was like originally like okay for, cause I mean, I see just in the graphic below, there's, I mean, the two galleries and the studio in that furthest western half that the art studio I imagine is gonna go, and that's where the, the improved conditional use permit was for, or is it like part of more than that?
And uh, look at the application packet from twenty twenty-three.
We originally used that whole front end for auto repair.
Yeah.
Now, Leshia wants to split, we split it in half, and she's got the main street side, we want the.
The middle part, basically, the middle part and the east side?
The middle part, we want the block building and the, or Leshia want, we split it half upon half. And we want, wanna go east with it.
Yeah, I see.
So, and then the guy who had it before us kinda ruined it, I mean, he moved out, now we just wanna assume it.
I see.
I think, if I remember right, it was probably, so if the section she's wanting to take over is twenty-eight feet, I would guess it was probably tw- another twenty-eight feet, kinda looking at the.
Uh, forty by seven-two area.
Was it forty by seven? If I can get this up on the D P L.
So orientation is all wrong here, uh, up is west, uh, but you see the western portion, uh, forty by seventy-two. Uh, they did improve the parking area there, I don't think it's marked yet. Parking spots. But that, that was the initial area that was approved for use under the conditional use permit, the eastern side is blocked off here, or gravel out there, so.
All that stuff, all that, all that drum come stuff is gone now?
Yeah.
It's all concrete now, right?
Just here.
Top of the east-west building.
There are some trailers parked on the the side of the building, on the grass, on the s- on the south side.
And there's one on the concrete.
Yeah.
On the south side.
So those, those were parking areas, and you, you see there's another area along the oval, I think that's the the loading, loading and unloading area, the off-street loading, that's required in zoning. Yeah, none of those are, are marked yet, so.
So if I understand this right, basically, the, it's a, the hope is to shift the conditional use permit from part of the west side to include the east side, correct?
The uh, the application packet that you have includes um, a sketch for um, both uses.
Right, the gallery, studio, that's.
Correct, yeah, yeah, and that, that's actually, we've already issued a building permit for that and everything. So that, that's perfectly fine, there's no issue there at all.
Is the, I forget the name of it. Fuel sales, is that part of, no, that's not part of your.
No, that's not part of the deal.
Not part of this building?
No, that was an old deal that they were trying to throw us under the bus, well, the last guy that was back there. So, he was mad at us for some reason, so.
So what's, what were the, I mean, the parameters for the last time for the conditional permit was to pave or to put some art surfacing on that like south and west side of the building in there, um.
They paved parking, I think there was security lining.
Right, like a visual barrier or something.
Uh, I can go back.
But it's like, I mean, are you gonna still use that concrete pad in front, and then you also wanna use the, the ground on the back?
Leshia will take part of that, from her gallery, yeah. And, and I wanna move to the back and, so.
We would wanna make sure, of course, that any parking spaces are usable and not blocked with
Right.
with the vehicles that are being repaired.
Yeah.
Um, or, you know, there's going to have to be a, a handicap parking space, for example, um, available as well, so.
And that's currently not signed, I'm guessing. Is it required to be designed?
Yes. Uh, so requirements were off-street parking requirements to be met by November one of twenty-three. Signage by November one of twenty-three, security lighting by November one of twenty-three. Yeah, and it only applied to Joel's use of, what they called unit A, uh, which is the western portion of the building and not the entire property. Those were the, the four conditions.
And those are all obviously.
Oh, but the signage.
There, I, I think there might have been an issue with timeline, but, I mean, it was maybe Kyle, I don't know if you remember this, but everything was permitted in time, and there was certainly the intent to get it done in time, but there were some weather delays or, or something else at hand, I don't know what it was. We were unconcerned with it at the time, yeah.
So realistically, the big thing would be needing to get the parking spots marked correctly and lines painted. If the gravel lot in the back needs attention, maybe get some crushed asphalt or something, hold on, no?
Gotta be gravel.
Gotta be gravel, gravel's dusty.
Crushed concrete?
Not my organs.
Yeah.
No, you gravel, gravel will pay after those are the only.
Get gravel all in the.
Yeah, and I, I don't think I'm there. I'm not terribly concerned with the, the condition of the gravel.
Yeah.
It's kept up pretty well, um, I think uh, it years ago, we may have had a mowing concern or a weed concern. Uh, that was mostly because there was just equipment all over back there that just, was just parked and left, and nobody moved to mow around, mow under it, it was just left to grow over equipment, so.
So the biggest thing would probably be the, making sure all the parking lines are painted and signage up?
Um, con- considering this is adjacent to a residential neighborhood, and it is central business district, I mean, you can require screening on the parking in the back as well, we haven't done that everywhere uh, in central business district, but um, it is an option, I just don't, you know, one of the things we wanna avoid is where it just becomes a junkyard. Uh, which um, which it has been in the past, and so we want, we just wanna make sure we avoid that.
That was with a different tenant, though, I mean, like, since, since you like.
Same owner.
Yeah, same owner, but it's just.
Some of it was the owners.
I see, okay. Would you be open to the screening piece, is that? Would you be open to the screening piece if we? Like a fence or? Yeah, tell them something just to provide a barrier from the residential. To the lot.
I, I don't see a problem with it, I guess, I mean, yeah. I mean, there won't be no junk cars or anything like that around here, like solidly there, but, yeah.
I don't necessarily think we need to do that.
I mean, you think of like Scott.
Right, Scott does.
I mean, he has a fence, but it's not like a visual barrier.
Right, right, uh, Dave's house one, but it's mostly a security fence for toes. It's not, it's not for screening, yeah.
I think if we just do parking piece.
Yep.
My words aren't coming to me today.
Words?
Yeah. Use your words.
So, my hearing is uh, maintain the parking area.
Yep.
Uh, uh, in, in my, in my opinion, uh, stick to the strict standards that we have for, for this, and if there's ever a question, call.
When is the in your best guess, when do you think you wanna have the gallery part open?
That depends on the speed.
Yeah.
If they can get conditional use from the back. We'll start within a week.
So, May, June?
Within a week.
Yeah, no, I mean, like, open.
Oh. Within a month, hopefully.
Yeah, so then we would say, we want the parking and signage and all that done by
By occupancy.
By
We're talking about the front.
June first.
The front half as far as the gallery, and not necessarily the back half as far as the
Yes.
car.
But what we're saying is, part of the conditional use permit is that the parking is painted and marked, you know, the loading zone and the handicap and all that by, you know, June first.
A lot of it depends on the city, because as we are instructed, the city may be able to put in a request to have the lineage put out front, where we can have angled parking, four spots, a handicap spot, and the additional spots.
Yeah.
And that was some put through the city as far as getting that done. I don't know how that works with that process. But as far as we're concerned, whenever is available.
Cause some of those spots are gonna have to be on that concrete pad, right?
No, as far as I was instructed, the s- the street is wide enough, we could have four spots out front, diagonal, diagonal spots, pull in. One of those could be handicapped, we could have the four spots out front, plus the additional parking pad on the side, minus the loading zone.
Which that makes sense, I mean, there's not a curb on the street.
Correct.
It's just you can
Correct.
stripe it, and I mean, as long as it's accessible on, it just needs to be accessible, obviously, which, I mean, it looks like it is.
But it's going in the period with the main street at all.
Yeah, right, it's a wide enough street where it's not an issue. Yeah, cause I mean, right now, it looks like there's par- I mean, just look at the picture, there's parallel. But, I mean, if it's, there's enough width there where you can angle it if you wanted to. So like, as far as, I mean, signage, I mean, the gallery, they already have like a building permit approved, don't they, Nate? I mean, I, this, this doesn't have anything to do with the gallery, it's more.
I mean, the gallery n- needs to have signage, obviously, everything needs to be done uh, there. Um, but they, they, they have a, a sign proposed in their plan. Uh, if we can get, um, if we can get parking spaces denoted on the street.
Yeah.
Uh, and that the handicap spot is actually accessible, and the building's accessible. Um, sorry, Kyle and I are looking at some of the parking requirements here, cause this is central business district. The off-street parking does not apply.
What do you mean off-street?
So, just like, uh, if you know different than City Hall or um, the salon are the only one. Because they're in the central business district and there's parking available on the street, there is not required off-street permit.
I see. So like technically, that concrete pad wouldn't have to be designated as parking?
No, you do need designated uh, loading zone.
Loading zone, I see what you're saying. Fourteen by thirty-five or something like that?
I think that's it.
So technically, they wouldn't need to stripe and do any of that work? None of that striking would have to be done, it just might be a good thing to do?
They need to do it on the street, I think, uh, that, that needs to be done. Um, and you need to leave that available, obviously, for customer parking, and make sure that there's a, you can have spots or something. Um, and we, we did discuss, cause there, there's no bathroom in the portion that the gallery is going to occupy. Uh, there will be um, a, a doorway built in that new wall that's widened up to accommodate accessibility.
Is it is it the businesses' responsibility to stripe Main Street, or is that something the city would do? I mean, maybe that's out of my problem to talk about, I guess, but, but I just, I mean, it's, it's on, it's in the right of way, I mean, I don't know if it's their, I mean, is it their responsibility?
I don't know, we never even had that question. We can definitely look at it, though. Maybe one way or, one way or another.
Does the city want them striping on Main Street? I mean, maybe that's a better question, way to word it, I mean, it's like.
Not necessarily.
Right, and so I mean, it's like, for the city.
That's graffiti, man.
So the cops on it.
That's on Main Street.
And we, I think we can figure that out, I think, it, just requiring the parking, I would, I would still, or requiring the marking, I would still make that requirement. Who's responsible for it, I think we can talk between us and the owner.
Okay.
And can we just say by occupancy, not necessarily a date?
That works for me.
I think the by occupancy is probably a good a good verbiage, cause I mean, you don't wanna go into business until a lot of these things are taken care of, obviously. Is it, is the bathroom something that needs to be required for them to operate this business?
Um, my understanding is they're not going to do, that's gonna be as is, so then one, they won't have to bring out the current code.
You have to have a usable space, but if you're not altering it, then it doesn't have to meet the A D A requirements.
You're not altering the size of the space, you're saying?
If, if you aren't changing that restroom at all. Obviously, encourage A D A compliance.
Well, and technically, that's simile enforced, so if somebody needs the use of grab bars, it it gets settled in the courts versus.
Yeah, and I think it, it's more of a, even getting in and out
Yeah.
would be a challenge in the existing restroom.
Having the door approach.
Correct, you know, having it open the right way, having the width wide, big enough, enough room inside to turn it in the stall, so.
So this conditional use permit applies to the whole building, or just, just the east side to?
Technically, you can apply it to an integral property, because a, a part of a property
It's difficult.
Doesn't really, yeah, I mean, you can't, this part of a property, it could give you an experiment without that subject. Uh, we were able to in this case because we were saying, this, this part of the building is working. Uh, so a conditional use permit applies to the whole property, but for, for the gallery, there is no permit required.
Right, right.
It is only for this specific use, so, the conditional use permit is for this use on this property, not necessarily all uses on this property.
It's just the property is owned by somebody, there's multiple tenants in it, so it just kinda complicates it.
Yes.
A little bit, so that's what I'm trying to understand.
Right, out of one tenant, the one tenant will stay in the east half, we make the whole building their building.
Yeah.
And they wanna sublease the front to the gallery.
I see, that makes sense.
Any further discussion? If not, I would enter a motion.
What's your guys', I mean, that's a really dumb question, but what's your guys' intended use? It's just, you guys are a mechanic shop, is that right? Or you just do outdoor work?
No, it's mechanical.
Just a mechanical, okay.
Yeah.
Motion to approve the conditional use permit for the property to, for mechanic use, mechanical use, I guess, mechanical, to perform mechanical work on vehicles, um, and including the three thousand foot, square foot, gravel lot in the back, um, with the contingency that handicap parking is provided in front, um, with painting and signage, the back is maintained. Trying to think of anything else.
Is that the back parking?
The back parking is maintained, back parking is okay, I guess.
I will wordsmith that.
That was the word I couldn't think of, contingency.
I'm trying to, if, if anyone else has any, like, anything else.
It's clear, it's clear to me what the motion is, but the minutes all.
Clear as mud, yeah.
Well, I know what you're saying.
Chat G P T will write it better.
There you go.
Yeah, that's right.
Okay, so we've got a motion.
Second.
And second. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion carries, get to work.
We'll do it. Thank you, guys.
Okay. I will close the public hearing at seven twenty-six P M, Central Standard Time. Are there any visitors to be heard? Seeing none, we will move on to the minutes from the February twenty-seventh meeting.
Uh, the minutes also include the order of adjustment minutes from the last year.
You guys need, probably any other questions from us?
I think we're good.
Thanks, thanks for coming.
Thank you very much, thank you very much.
Well, all we're trying to do is roll things, right?
Yep.
I know somebody wants to talk somewhere.
Do you need a separate motion to approve each minute?
You can approve both, one motion.
I would to approve the bits from both.
Second, motion and the second, all in favor? Aye. No. We will go to Kyle.
My construction update, we got twenty-two permits issued so far this year. Seventeen of them residential, we got the two permits and new construction home, which is a twin home. And then three commercial projects. Any questions on that? No, sorry. And my code enforcement updates, I had violations for steerability in poor condition, parking on grass, knockable vehicles, unsightly trash and junk, and parking over sidewalk. Unsightly trash and junk, and parking over sidewalk.
The conditional use permit, is that? Is that for improvements or what's, four hundred E second street?
Uh that one is for business that's been there for a while, I know a long time, that just don't have a conditional use permit. For working with the order to contain that.
And clean up the property.
Any more questions for Kyle?
Looking for a specific. Code enforcement item here, I think.
Okay.
From South Main.
Fourth thing.
Sounds right.
It was on there.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, that one was a. I'd say a good example of something I walk and drive by probably every day and just never noticed. I'm glad someone said something.
Yeah, that's right next to the driveway to the school.
Correct.
Yep, it's consistently just people parking on the si- or the resident parking on the sidewalk.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know how busy that sidewalk is, but I guess it's it's still parked on the sidewalk.
It is a sidewalk.
I would say it's in front of, right by the school, so.
And it goes into the, like, the bus bar area?
Yeah, right, yeah.
But the whole backyard is full of vehicles, so. Maybe not as many vehicles as our west third property, but still full.
Any other questions? Thanks, Kyle.
I think a motion to adjourn.
Second.
You have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Beaming. Okay, everyone needs paper, paper.